If you have the agenda, you'll see there are two cases that have been adjourned at request. Number 2847 and 2848. Can I have a motion to adjourn those two applications?
I move.
Have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
And we have several applications up to be decided. Case number one, 2834 Victoria Fraser, 10 Leo's Lane.
Okay, I can do an oral decision. In view of the fact that the subject lot is a corner lot, comma, in view of the shape of the subject lot in relation to the Adams Lane cul-de-sac, the location of the existing house with a setback of 10.2 feet from Adams Lane, the location of the proposed house with a setback of 16.6 feet from Adams Lane for the attached garage part of the proposed house, and a substantially greater setback from Adams Lane for the remainder of the proposed house, and upon considering and balancing all relevant factors, we find that a front yard variance to 16.6 feet from Adams Lane for the proposed house is warranted. Therefore, we grant such variance. If you want to pass that on to Cam D., that'll make that easier for her.
You want to move that?
I suppose we approve this as stated by the attorney.
Do I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Case number 2843, Richard Gelfon, 2 Squabble Lane.
Okay, we have an environmental assessment and negative declaration from our environmental consultant and a wetland special permit with conditions. So you can do the following. We adopt the negative declaration prepared by our environmental consultant and we grant a wetland special permit in accordance with the permit prepared by our environmental consultant.
And I move that we approve this as stated by our attorney.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
A copy of those conditions that I could...
I think you can.
I think I have a copy. Which one is this? Gelfon?
Gavitt Berman case.
Thanks, thank you.
On the application of case number 2844, Cameron Thomas Ildehanian, 1190 Middle Lane.
Okay, the same thing. We have a negative declaration from our environmental consultant and a wetland special permit with conditions. So we can do the following. We adopt the negative declaration prepared by our environmental consultant and we grant a wetland special permit in accordance with the permit prepared by our environmental consultant.
I move that we approve this as stated by our attorney.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
And before you go on, on number 2835, 24 Pulaski Street, we should hold that for decision for the next meeting.
We're going to hold that for decision.
So I move that we hold 2835 Pulaski Street for decision.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That brings us down to the pending cases, the first one being 2757 Wickpon Pond Rehab Project. Is there anybody here for that?
You know, we've been carrying this for...
Been carrying this for several months.
How many months? Maybe we should just deny it without prejudice.
He did meet with Chick, but he hasn't gotten back to Chick with the suggestions that were made.
We can either adjourn it again or you can deny it without prejudice. That's up to you guys.
Let me just adjourn it again until we can talk to Chick. How's that?
Okay.
Maybe he can talk to whoever.
Yeah, maybe he can get back to that guy and...
Yeah, we will cancel it next time.
Right. Want to move that?
I move that we... What are we doing?
Adjourn all purposes.
Adjourn 2757 for all purposes.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
2836 St. Andrews Dune Church, 12 Gin Lane.
Jim Walker for Mental Science. Church would like to adjourn it until January. We got our conditions sent to us late and we hadn't had a chance to review them and the attorney would like to wait until January.
Okay.
I brought a letter.
All right, you can put it in the file.
So I'll move that we adjourn this until January meeting?
Yes.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Case number 2838, George Harmer, 97 Moses Lane. Is somebody here for the application?
Hi, John Tarbitt for... Amato Ortiz for the owner of the property.
I think we asked you about the pool house and you did send us something?
I did.
Google it.
Yep.
I think everything seems to be fine there.
Okay.
The other thing we wanted, Rick, was an old decision, is that right?
Pull out that file.
There isn't anything on those other two properties in the post.
Okay, in looking at what we asked for at the last meeting and what we received in our work session packet Tuesday night, he did provide the prior decision.
You were also looking for a survey to have the offset shown?
And he did provide a survey showing the setback that we asked for. When we asked for the prior decision, we also asked that you provide with that the survey showing what we granted. And that's not in my packet. I don't know if anybody else has it.
Copy the survey?
I have in my packet from Tuesday night the December 16, 1999 board decision on Harmer. There is no attachment showing what we... There's no survey or whatever showing what we granted.
The old survey, you mean?
Yes.
We have one dated December 5th. December 5th.
No, I'm talking about the 1999 survey showing what was proposed that we granted. You know, just looking at the decision doesn't tell us...
What we granted?
Well, we granted what's shown on the current survey.
Okay. But we're not ready for a decision tonight anyhow. You know, we can close it for decision, but please follow up and get...
I just don't remember. I didn't remember you asking for a copy of the survey of the decision, but I'm happy to deliver one. I might even have one in the file.
Okay, we need a map that shows what you were proposing back in 1999 that we granted.
Okay.
So that we can compare that with what's there now and understand our prior decision.
No problem. Is there anything else you would like besides that?
That's the only thing that I see.
Can't say anything. We have the Google map. We have the old decision. We just need what you just asked for.
Okay.
We can adjourn it for decision subject to submission of the...
If I have a copy of the old survey in the file, does that help tonight? I might have it. I'd go back there and...
Well, we really need you to provide, you know, multiple copies so we each have one.
If you can have it in by the work session, which is the 13th.
Okay. I just don't...
If you have it in by then, we should be able to have a decision for you by the 20th.
You understand what I'm asking for?
I definitely understand what you're asking for.
Right, okay.
You adjourn around the audience, they'll try to hear to this application.
Do I move we adjourn this for all purposes?
No.
No. We can adjourn it for a decision subject to submission of the map from 1999 showing what we granted in our 1999 decision.
Can I make that motion?
Yeah.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. On the application of case number 2839, J. Jeff Holding LLC, 1999 Mariner's Drive.
Good evening. Todd Mobley, owner.
And Tom Lawrence, agent and employee for the owners.
What did we ask for last time?
You wanted elevations of the shed on the back.
Elevations of the shed.
And photographs, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
And photographs, sir.
Photos.
Photos? Yes.
Do we have any evidence that you need?
I'm sorry, just making notes on the last one so I don't forget. Okay, what are we up to? Oh.
We have the photos.
Okay.
We have the elevations.
Yep. What we had asked them to do was to submit plans for the quote lean-to shed. We received those at the work session Tuesday night and I believe that you're ready, satisfied and ready for a decision?
Yep.
Upon review of the plans for the existing quote lean-to shed, those quote involved in this application, comma, in view of its location to the north of the two-story building, comma, and in view of the character of the adjoining property to the north, comma, and upon considering and balancing all relevant factors, comma, we find that the requested setback variance to 9.1 feet from the northerly line is warranted, period. Therefore, we grant such variance subject to the applicant obtaining a building permit.
I move that we approve this as stated by our attorney.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Brings down a case number 2840, the Peconic Land Trust, 296 Hampton Road.
For the applicant Gilbert J. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. This is a continuing application which was heard in the first instance at your meeting last month and you had asked us to submit some additional information which we, I believe we provided to you for the work session, just to summarize what the changes were that you requested. You requested that the zoning district boundary line shift that we were requesting match the property line, which we did. You also asked us to show what the new transitional yard, 50-foot transitional yard would be based on that shift, which we did. You also asked us to show the setbacks of the proposed new off-street parking spaces from the property lines and we've done that. You also asked us, because the original map was very busy, to produce a second map which was somewhat simplified and at a larger scale, a 1 to 20 scale rather than a 1 to 30 scale, which we did, and it shows the fairly clearly the new zoning district boundary line we're requesting, the new 50-foot transitional yard and what would be located within that transitional yard. And in addition, we submitted a more detailed landscaping plan to show how the proposed parking area would be buffered from the east. Now, all of that was contained in a letter that I submitted on December 16th in advance of the work session. There are a couple of things I'd just like to point out about that which I think are interesting. Within the transitional yard as proposed, there would be a total of 13 off-street parking spaces. My client has pointed out that of those 13, four are already generally existing within that area, even though if you've been there, you note that the area's not all striped, but there were four spaces that are already there, so we're not introducing those. And six of the spaces shown on the map actually would be within the footprint of the existing house and patio which is to be removed. So the net result would be an increase of an activity of three spaces within that transitional yard. Now, there's one thing I didn't point out at the first meeting, which I probably should have, in that if you examine the site plan that you have in front of you, you'll note that there is only one access proposed on Old Town Road, whereas currently there are two accesses. There's an access at the very south end of the property which provides access to this property and also to the Marin property to the east of it. And there's also another access somewhat further to the north and closer to the intersection with Hampton Road. That northerly curb cut access would be eliminated. So I would submit that that would, if anything, enhance the safety, traffic safety factor in that particular area, which was something that was mentioned at the initial hearing. So there would be one access as opposed to two. In addition, the access that we're proposing to be the remaining access would be modified to comply with current width requirements for a two-way access, a 24-foot aisle. So that would also serve, in our opinion, to enhance safety in the area. And finally, if you look at the landscape plan, you can see that in accordance with the transitional yard requirements, we're proposing a fairly substantial double row of arborvitae with a six-foot-high stockade fence, which would both in terms of vision and noise, screen that activity from the property immediately to the south. And I may remind you that at the initial hearing, the property owner immediately to the south was here and voiced no objection to the application. We've also shown in a small island that's just on the north side of the access, some additional planting which would provide screening from the neighbors, I guess you'd call it, to the southeast. Another thing that you might notice from examining the existing survey and also the site plan, the way the current access at the south end works, and it's worked for years, it actually slightly encroaches on the neighbor to the south and east. I think that's the Breitner property. As part of our proposal to do this, we would eliminate that encroachment and thereby take away a problem that the Breitners might have in terms of a title issue. So I think that's, I think we've provided what you asked us to provide and we're happy to try to answer any questions or give you any further explanation if you so desire.
So the zoning line now will correspond to the property line to the south, is that correct?
That's correct. That's right. And we've shown the transitional yard. We've taken 50 feet from that to show what that would actually mean.
Any other questions? Dick?
They've submitted the things that I asked for at the last meeting. So I don't have anything, any further comments?
The audience likes to hear this application.
Adjourn it for decision if you want.
Close it for decision.
Yeah, I move that we close this for decision.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Lisa's Loga, I'm the architect for Amanda Taylor, who is the principal of 175 Woolley Street LLC. If you remember when we were here last, I think we discussed the project pretty much in detail and you asked me for a few things. You asked me for the previous decisions on the property as well as an existing survey, which you should have gotten by your work session, hopefully.
I think what we said, we thought this was a plus over what was done several years ago. In fact, several years ago, we thought they should do this and they didn't. Now they're going to do it.
Yes.
It opens up the property.
It's a different property owner.
Right, right.
So you are ahead of your time.
We were.
Maybe next time they'll listen to you, Kevin.
They may listen to you. I have no questions.
No.
No. No. If there's anyone in the audience wants to hear this application. Nope. Very good audience tonight, not asking any questions.
Do you want to dispose of it?
Fine.
Okay. Upon review of our prior decision with respect to the subject parcel, the plans for the current proposal, and the information submitted with respect to the character of the neighborhood, comma, and upon considering and balancing all relevant factors, comma, we find that the requested variances are consistent with relief previously granted and are warranted, period. Therefore, we grant the following variances. Bear with me for a second. A front yard, one, a front yard variance to 25 feet from Pelletro Street for the proposed covered porch. Two, a setback variance to 35.2 feet from Pelletro Street for the proposed swimming pool. Three, a setback variance to 35.8 feet from Pelletro Street for the proposed addition to an existing garage.
I move that we approve this as stated by our attorney.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That brings the case number 2845, Judith Guest, 1 First Neck Lane.
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea, Mark Simpson, and Bruin. At the last meeting, the board, if you recall, we asked, there was a letter in the file from the Irving Homeowners Association who asked for additional time to review our plans and my client, in fact, has corresponded with the homeowners association and in fact, based on discussions with the homeowners association and after further review, determined to revise her plan and reduce the size of the porch from a porch that was 14 by 30 to 14 by 20. I believe in your file, there's also a letter dated December 16th from the homeowners association who said they reviewed it and actually approved it. My client is in agreement with all their concerns and conditions. So if the board has any particular questions. Additionally, and I submitted all this revised plan by letter dated the 16th, hope you had an opportunity to look at it at your work session. The, and that included revised architectural elevations and a survey from Jake Buckeye. My letter also was trying to address some of the questions raised by your counsel as to the origin of the mapping here of these individual units. I do provide as much explanation I can from the public records. I just want to make sure, one of the things I indicated was attached, whether it was submitted, but it was a copy of the planning board minutes from October 5th, 1981, which just contained a reference of when the developer appeared in front of the planning board to review a proposed condominium. So I'll just submit that. But as I indicated in the letter, there was no subsequent condominium plan or subdivision map filed. The other thing was we did a substantial amount of title searches and I don't know if the actual certification from the title company came with the information that I provided you. So I'll provide that. And one of the things they certified was that there is no subsequent subdivision map or condominium map filed in the county clerk's office or in miscellany maps or otherwise. But they also show you the chain of title here, shows that there were deeds created in 1985. In fact, the deed from the homeowners association established each of the individual lots and units here. And thereafter, not only has the village zoning board entertained applications and granted variance on one of the units, individual units, but the building department has routinely issued building permits on the individual units and certificates of occupancy, several as each, as you know, as each unit is conveyed. There's also a survey that we're able to dig up that sort of shows the plan as it was, this was originally dated December 30th, 1981, and then subsequently revised to December 3rd, 1984, that actually shows all the units as they were constructed. So as I see it, even though I don't have a clear picture that is available from your village records, I did spend an inordinate amount of time trying to review your records, actually spent two hours going page by page in the planning board minutes, checked village board records, title searches, health department, Freedom of Information Act searches and so on. As I see it, the choice, the property is zone MF20 and the relief can either be granted as we were directed here by the building department to seek relief on this individual lot and unit for the lot width and lot coverage, or this board can make a finding that if you look at this as a whole in the MF20 district, that no variance is necessary because it would otherwise comply to the lot coverage and setback requirements of the MF20 if you were to ignore the fact that individual units were conveyed out here. So if you have any other questions, I think we've exhausted our ability to find the origin of the lots. I believe they were conveyed out pursuant to homeowners' offering plan and that there was some confusion in the minutes back in the 19, early 1980s as to the need to file condominium maps or multiple dwelling maps and the like. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Okay, these would be questions for me.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I haven't, obviously haven't looked yet at what you just submitted tonight.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at your December 16 letter, which we got at the work session. And it says that the separate units were mapped by the tax map agency as a result of a deed to the homeowners association in 1985?
That's correct. That's what the title company certified to you.
Okay, do you have a copy of that deed?
That was submitted in the package, I believe.
In what package?
There is a package in your file and it's this thick, rather than make 10 copies of it, knowing that the board members probably wouldn't look at each of these. There is one set in the file.
Is that this?
Yes.
That was in the file. Didn't get into...
All that legal stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
Want to look at that?
Why don't you?
If you all want individual copies, I'll get it, but I don't, I think this is something Rick would...
This is something for Rick Bailey.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And this was...
I would suggest that at some point you file one copy for the zoning board file.
And one for you.
In case, oh, I'll take this one.
Okay.
So that I can...
I have another one, so I can, I can, I'll make a copy though and put it in the file.
Okay.
And let me, that's adjourned for all purposes. And let me, that's adjourned for all purposes. Let me review this stack of legal documents.
That's fine.
When I find time.
Absolutely.
And we'll take it from there. And I'll talk to Wayne if I have any questions after I look at it, I'll talk directly to Wayne if there's more that I ask for.
Not a problem.
Is there anyone out in the audience who'd like to be heard of this application? Therefore, we're going to adjourn this for all purposes.
I move that we adjourn this for all purposes.
Second?
One, please.
Thank you, have a good holiday.
That brings us down to 2846 EAM 40 Meadow Lane, 40 Meadow Lane. For the applicant.
Okay, actually, we need to refer to it as the appellant.
The appellant, that's right, yes. He's not the applicant, you're right.
Although...
He's the appealer.
It's my recollection that the appellant made his initial presentation at the last hearing, and that we adjourned it for the property owners.
I think we were hearing from John Bennett at the time.
Response, so perhaps the proper procedure would be for John to make his initial presentation, and then we can...
Right.
Take it from there, we'll see how much time goes by, et cetera.
What I would like to...
Just so everybody knows, I think it's pretty obvious that this decision, this case will be held open and adjourned for all purposes when we finish tonight. I can't imagine it being closed.
What I would like to ask is that each side would refrain from making comments until the other side has made their side, and then you can do your rebuttal.
Well, of course.
Last month, things got a little bit, a little touchy there for a while.
Understood.
I think we'd like to avoid that.
Absolutely.
So if I may, thank you, and thank you for letting me continuing, continue our comments. I did, I will ask that the board adjourn this for all purposes, because I did yesterday at around 5:50 receive a 14-page, single-spaced, page letter from, from the attorney for the appellant, and while some of it is, appears to be cumulative or a recitation of some of the arguments that were made at the last meeting, there is unquestionably new matter in there, and I don't think it's fair to, to have me or the team that's here with me or yourself react to that, so I will, I will ask that. And given the fact that we'll be, hopefully be back, so that you can hear a full explanation of both parties' sides, I'll try to be as quick as possible. But I do have with me this evening Stuart Diston and John Rosenzweig from Austin, Patterson and Diston, who are the project architects, Stephen Lemansky, the project engineer, Timothy Brumpf, the, the project landscape architect, and Drew Bennett, an engineer, who is both a private engineer and a public engineer, who we've asked to review the plans for FEMA compliance. So what I want to do is, I want to bring up Mr. Diston and Mr. Rosenzweig and Mr. Bennett, but I do want to give you a little bit of, of news on what has happened. The Dean and Hackett's raise four issues.
John, could you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Not a whole lot louder, as like you sometimes do, but a little louder.
All right. Thank you. I got you. The Dean and Hackett House raises four issues, and their position on all four are legally and factually incorrect. They raise the issue of the height of the house, what the starting off point is for a house in the flood plain, and we think it's quite clear that it's a, you start, the jumping off point for starting the measurement of a house is the base flood plain elevation plus two, and so the building inspector found. Whether or not this is a two and a half story house, the building inspector found that it was, they can claim it's a three-story house, the building inspector disagreed with that, and, and found that the house, that the permit was issued for was legal. Is it a pitch roof or a flat-roofed house, and therefore are they entitled to have a 35-foot-high house? The building inspector also found that to our benefit, to our favor on that point, based upon his interpretation. And also, they challenged our compliance with the federal emergency management regulations and rules as have been enacted by the village in their own village code, and the building inspector found that the plans comply. We're going to have, we're going to show you why they comply, and what will, we're quite confident that you'll agree with us, that this is either a total misunderstanding of the plans and the FEMA regulations, or an attempt to confuse you. All four of these arguments have been made by the, made by this appellant before, before the courts, and have, and the courts have rebuffed these, all of these arguments, finding that the applicant before you this evening did not have a likelihood of success in prevailing on any of these arguments. And that's important, because this is, this is a court of law, looking at it from a purely legal point of view, decided that there was no likelihood of success on the merits. And I talked to you a little bit about the, the last time about Justice Santorelli's October 28th order, in which he denied the petitioner's request for preliminary injunction, and in doing so, he relied heavily on Mr. Foster's explanation of why he granted this building permit. But since that date, the, the appellant attempted to have the appellate division, second department, issue a temporary restraining order, and that, if I may, thank you, Billy, the appellate division, second department, just a little, little, little background, when you appeal from what's called an interlocutory order in an Article 78 proceeding, you don't have an appeal as of right, but they're quite often granted if the appellate division seems that there's something worthy of reviewing. For the record, I have the order of the appellate division, second department, in which, just recently, they declined to even grant leave to appeal for that, so, which I, which I think, but they read the papers, they were very substantive papers on both sides, pretty thoroughly briefed by both the, the objectant as well as my office, and I think that's a pretty strong message, that they found that there was no likelihood of success on the merits. And understand what that means, these are, this is a full panel of the appellate division looking at the arguments made as to whether or not there is any merit, likelihood of success on the merits, and four appellate division judges found, they didn't even grant the motion for leave to appeal, and I think that speaks, speaks volumes. My client did everything right, made an application to the building department, made an application to the architectural review board, got some relief from you guys beforehand, and started construction, and he has been tormented by what I can only call hypocritical arguments. Hypocritical because the very theories that are being attacked here were used by the Dean and Hackett in the construction of their homes. Not only the measurement of height, but you're going to hear, as you already heard, about how the building code says that you can only bring in two feet of fill on a piece of property. The appellants are likely to want you to ignore the fact that it says two feet of fill, except in essence, when the building inspector is satisfied, that you can bring in more. Why do I call that hypocritical? Because as, as I demonstrated the last time, for example, on the Dean, on the Dean property, nine feet, nine feet of fill were brought into the Dean property, and probably the, I showed you the, I showed you the both before and the after topographic information on the surveys in the Dean property that were taken from the building permit file, but probably the best, even a picture being worth a thousand words, these are the retaining walls, and again, we're being told how horrible retaining walls are in our plans, these are retaining walls on the Dean property. These are photographs that are taken by myself at the Dean, at the Dean property. So I think you're going to see that yet, again and again, there's a, there's a pattern of arguing, sure, sure, pattern of arguing, and, and I, well, you have the appellate division decision, a pattern of arguing that, well, the Dean and Hackett can do one thing, they, we can't do anything of the sort. Let me tell you a little bit, a little, just a wee bit more of history about some, some activity before, before the courts. Last week, not on this property, but on a property called 320 Murray Place, the, the adjacent owner, Mr. Sullivan, the, let me back up a little bit, the architectural review board had granted an approval for the 320 Murray Place application, and indeed, the trustees pursuant to their exemption powers, and the moratorium granted a moratorium exemption. That house at 320 Murray Place also used, as its jumping off point, the base flood plain plus two. Mr. Sullivan went into court last week and asked Judge Pastarosa to, Pastor, Pastarasa to, to issue a preliminary injunction or a temporary restraining order against the construction of that house, and the argument was the same, that you have to take the, the height from the natural grade, and as in this case, the Supreme Court Suffolk County declined to, to issue a temporary restraining order. So not only do you have the judge in this case, Judge Santorelli, four appellate division judges, and now another Supreme Court judge, saying that that theory about not being able to use the base flood plain elevation from plus two in the village of Southampton, it just doesn't hold water. I thought it was also interesting, if I may, I'm sorry, there's a lot of documentation, I'm just, I thought it was also interesting to point out to you that one of the, one of the consultants that was hired by the, by the appellant here, Lisa LaCory, did prepare for the Southampton Association back in July of 2014, a survey, a survey of the height regulations in the various municipalities, and although she's singing a different tune on this application, this was her finding, which I'm sure she'll try to explain away, but nevertheless, here it is in black and white, "Within the village of Southampton, the flood zones generally do not correspond to the zoning districts where the pyramid regulations apply, and the 30-foot, the 30-foot maximum building height regulation is measured from the base flood plain elevation requirement plus two feet of freeboard with no absolute cap above mean sea level." So this is some contrary findings by Ms. LaCory, who again contends that the building inspector has measured the, the height of the house from incorrectly. What I do want to do now is, if I may, bring up Mr. Diston, Mr. Rosenzweig, to explain to you the fact that this house also complies in terms of the two and a half story and the pitch, as opposed to requirements in the code, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Bennett, Drew Bennett, as it turns out, I think we do share a great-great-grandfather, to come up and talk to you about how we comply with them.
Before you start, could I just mention one thing to board members? It's pretty likely, it seems pretty likely, that no matter which way you end up deciding this case, it's likely to go to court. The applicant, the appellant and the attorney for the property owner are generally following our guidelines and submitting multiple copies of lots of documents. We end up with one in the village file, and you guys and I have the rest. Can I ask you to not chuck anything, so that if there's an Article 78, we don't have to reproduce again things that have already been reproduced? Just save them somewhere, and we can compile them later if we need them. Thank you.
Mr. Diston and Mr. Rosenzweig are going to, are going to explain how this, as Mr. Foster agreed, this, this house complies, but we also have an affidavit from Mr. Diston explaining that, and I thought that would be helpful for you to review. I'll give you additional...
Hi, my name's Stuart Diston, and Josh Rosenzweig is next to me here. So, the code simply says, "A story with at least two opposite exterior sides meeting a sloping roof not more than two feet above the floor of such story, and having a ceiling height of at least seven and a half feet, not more than half the total floor area." The appellate argues that we have a ridge line of 13 feet, and we would just counter argue that that is a ridge line and not a ceiling line, that we do not have a ceiling over seven and a half feet for more than 50% of the area of which the floor is located. So we meet that aspect of the code in all respects, and to argue that the code means seven, that that can't be more than seven and a half feet is not accurate in any way, especially if you have to have a seven and, seven and, seven and 12 pitch, if you have a house that's 33 feet wide, there's no way it could possibly be as low as seven and a half, as low as seven and a half feet. It's impossible. So the spirit of the code is, is ceiling height not more than seven and a half feet for 50% of the floor, and we meet that. There are also arguing or implying that, that somehow it's not meant to be habitable space, and certainly the code says two and a half stories, it allows for habitable space, just not more, just not with a ceiling height higher than seven and a half feet for 50% of the floor area. Regard to a story with at least two opposite exterior sides meeting a sloping roof not more than two feet above the floor area, we have at least two opposite exterior sides on the north side of the house. That gable meets sloping roof area not more than two and a half feet above the floor from which it is on. And that sloping roof also, on that shallow sloping roof also abuts the side dormers on the east and west side.
If I may ask you, Mr. Diston, did you have a meeting with John Foster in which you utilized these diagrams?
Yes, we did. We walked through it with him.
And at the end of that meeting, had he reached any conclusions?
He was satisfied with it.
You guys are going to have to talk...
At the end of that meeting, had he reached any conclusions?
Yes, he was satisfied with it.
Okay.
I'd also like to point, point to the diagrams that were submitted by the appellate, showing their ideal roof line here, and that these two elements protruding out, which I would certainly call dormers, and we have some photographs to show what a typical dormer looks like in town with the older houses.
Those are exhibit 13 of the affidavits of Mr. Diston.
It's in our affidavit. So the first house is, is actually the, the law office here in town around the corner, and there's a gabled roof, and these are dormers coming right out to the edge of the side wall here, three of them coming down, and that is reflected in their drawing, too, which is a very typical element in town. This is, on this side, is an older house with a much larger dormer, also in plain with the wall below it, okay? And we feel that that reflects the spirit of the zoning as well.
Well, it's not the spirit, it's the letter of the law.
The letter of the law.
And, and Mr. Diston's recitation is contained...
John, John, you're talking, we can't even hear you here, and you're not talking into the mic, it's not going to get picked up on the video and the tape.
Okay.
Maybe you should shout like, instead of...
Okay. I just wanted to let you know that what Mr. Diston had just explained to you is, and contained in his affidavit, as well as the, the drawings that he used to explain the, the compliance of the, of the house with these code sections. And again, these are the, these are the findings that have been made by Mr. Foster in allowing the, the construction of the house, the building permit to be issued and the construction of the house to proceed. One thing I do want to say is, people can argue about code definitions, but... One thing I do want to say is that people can argue about code definitions, but as I think, as I'm sure your counsel will tell you, if there is any reasonable interpretation, I think you'll agree that this is more than a reasonable interpretation. Zoning laws are, we've heard it before, a derogation of common law and you construe it in favor of the applicant, but I don't think there's really much doubt whatsoever that this house complies. Are there any questions?
Chairman, can I just make one comment?
Yes.
Just for the record, I want the record to be clear that the expert used a plan that was not an approved building plan, which he's using for demonstrative purposes and if you recall, last month, my client was not allowed to use a drawing that was not the approved building drawing, so I just want to make that clear.
Well, the approved plans are in the affidavit.
Okay. That was an example that he showed us.
No, these, no, 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 no. This is the approved plan.
This is the approved plan.
Which one is the approved plan?
These are, these are photographs right from the approved plan.
But the other three things you showed were not the approved plan.
Everything that you see up before you has been submitted to the Building Department for record.
I'm talking about the three examples you showed.
It's all in the Building Department.
Talking about the photocopies.
The photocopy was from the appellate.
Examples of roof lines.
That was from the appellate last time.
That was theirs. That was theirs. Everything we showed is in the building dorm application permits.
Let me just clarify one thing for the record because to the extent that Mr. Guardino is suggesting that we didn't accept anything by way of examples, we did accept the affidavit that Mr. Guardino submitted. I forget the name of the architect, but there was an affidavit from some architect that Mr. Guardino submitted that had what I call an example of a roof design that they were saying is or is not in accordance with the code and we accepted, we accepted it for that purpose. Right. We didn't accept anything that those necessarily depicted the plans of this house.
And my, and when that, that document which Rick described came up, I just wanted the board to be aware of the fact that those were not the, those were not the house plans. That's all. Now.
Do you have anything else, John?
Well, Drew Bennett is here.
Okay.
And I'd like him to talk about the house's compliance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency Regulations. I do have, and I'll, we have a letter that Drew prepared, but I wanted to speak in general terms, as to not belabor the points, and we will be back, back next month.
Good evening. My name is Drew Bennett, consulting engineer, doing business at Three Rarord Avenue in East Hampton, New York. I have licensed professional engineering in the state of New York. I've been practicing professionally for over thirty years. I've had my own private practice for the last eleven, practicing exclusively on the east end of Long Island and I have a great deal of experience building projects in and around the coastal plain and the flood plain. I also currently serve as the village engineer for the village of East Hampton and the village of Sagapaw. I was retained to perform an analysis and render an opinion of the proposed project and how it stands relative to flood plain regulations. And I've prepared a moderate-sized letter report, which I think you're thumbing through right now, and I'll just sort of go over it at a high level and touch on the important points. As part of my scope of work, I've visited the property, I've reviewed the proposed project plans, and I've also reviewed affidavits that were submitted and dated November 2014. I have not had a chance to review a letter that was submitted by the attorney, Mr. Guardino, I think, believe his name is, that I received this afternoon at two o'clock. I just haven't had a chance to go through that, so my comments may not touch on everything that's in that letter. The first thing that Mr. Guardino's team points out in one of their affidavits is that the proposed project violates the village code with respective flood plain requirements in particular, and they make that point because the project is proposing to have more than two feet of fill. And I just want to state the obvious in that it's very clear in the village code that more than two feet of fill are permitted for a project so long as you have a valid permit, valid building permit. And this project does have a valid building permit. FEMA has various coastal construction manuals and guidance memos and technical bulletins and they suggest that an assessment or analysis be done if you're going to have more than two feet of fill on a particular project. And for my analysis, I basically utilized those federal guidelines and documents to perform basically what I believe is an objective assessment. I also want to point out that the building inspector has a great deal of authority and a great deal of discretion on how and what type of assessment to perform and, you know, that's basically, we leave that up to him. There are some municipalities that ask us for a written assessment and there are some that don't. And so what I did for this case is I just performed an assessment as if I was requested to do so. So the guidelines basically touched on half a dozen criteria that the person evaluating the application should consider. First is grading to prevent ponding, drainage requirements, clearance between lowest floor elevation and the fill, compaction of the fill and surrounding topography. I'd like to state that the drainage design for this particular project conforms to the village's design standards. And I'd also like to point out that while there is fill in the center of the lot, the low areas are along the property lines to the east and the west, which is actually accepted construction practice in accordance to FEMA's guidelines. FEMA is trying to get water not to pond in the house or neighboring house or, you know, within the house or under the house. So by having the low spots on the property line, that's basically the best place to have a low spot, should there ever be any ponding during a storm surge. So in my opinion, it conforms to the drainage requirements. The second point is clearance of the top of the fill. What's the clearance? You should leave a, leave a clearance between the lowest floor system, lowest elevation of the floor system and the fill itself. And the plans are actually pretty complicated to review, but directly under the structure, there's actually twelve feet of clearance. The grade underneath the structure is twelve feet lower than the floor system itself. The issue is that there is fill on the perimeter, particularly on the south-facing portion of the house. But if you study the plans carefully, and I did have the benefit of speaking to the architects to help me clarify the architectural plans, there are a number of points where water could enter the cavity that's underneath the home, either through breakaway walls or other voids. So in my opinion, it satisfies that criteria. The next thing that's considered typically is compaction of fill. The code's very clear that no structure shall be supported by fill. However, FEMA clarifies that and lists some exceptions and some of those exceptions are swimming pool patios and terraces. And so the fill that is around the perimeter of the home supports those types of structures and that is very much compatible with the FEMA requirements in their guidelines. So they're very specific about that in their, in their manual. And then the final is really kind of a topography and that can be, if fill is being brought in for dune reconstruction or repair, that type of fill can be brought in without any type of analysis or assessment. It's basically considered compatible. And so when I looked at the property, I realized that this site's been developed since the 1880s. There's already a house here and so as you look back at some of the records, they probably leveled part of the dune land back in the 1880s to make, to make a, a house site, building site. And so by bringing in beach-compatible sand or fill, this is proposed by this particular project, it's not necessarily inconsistent with dune construction. Now, their purpose of bringing the fill in isn't rebuilding the dune, but nevertheless, it's not inconsistent with rebuilding what was perhaps a dune many years ago. And again, it provides some buffer to the municipal road that's to the north of the dune line. The assessment also considers the topography, is it consistent with other neighboring topography? And in this case, I think Mr. Bennett pointed out that the neighbors, you know, the last ten or twenty years when they developed their houses, brought in fill also to raise their properties. It's clear that this proposed project, the one that we're discussing tonight, has a higher elevation than the neighboring properties. It's also a much smaller lot. So one could argue that it's not, even though all three lots have brought in fill, the fill on this lot is higher than the neighboring lots and my best estimates by about five feet right at the median area of the house itself, relatively small footprint. So then that triggers some other questions. How steep are the slopes? Are we going to have wave run-up? Are we going to have wave reflection, deflection, those types of things? And so we looked at those and I'll point out that the, the fill facing south, which is in the direction that the wave attack would come from, has a slope of about one-on-three. And rule of thumb, best practice is that's about, anything, anything flatter than that is typically not considered to have a problem with wave run-up or deflection. It's basically considered to not have an impact. The one-on-three is about where the threshold occurs. And so because the slope is at one-on-three, I continued asking the questions and continued the analysis. And what I realized is that there are no hard structures facing south. It's just, there's an existing dune in front of the proposed project and then there's fill in front of the proposed house at a one-on-three and it's soft material. And because it's soft, it's going to rapidly erode during wave attack and it'll scour. And in fact, most of the sand doesn't get pushed toward the roadway. As you know, with coastal erosion, most of it is taken away in the toral drift and taken down the shoreline or taken offshore. Some stages of the storm, it does put sand landward, but most of the sand is lost to the sea. And so maybe the first wave that would hit this slope would have some wave run-up and I've done some estimates of that in the assessment, but in my opinion, that slope would very rapidly erode away and be flattened and would not have an effect. And because it's, even, even at the starting point, it's a very mild slope, that'll only get flatter as a wave attack occurs, wave reflection, deflection and refraction really aren't issues. It's not a hard structure, it's a solid structure. If it's a hard structure, it'd be a different type of situation. So because of the relatively small size of it, it has a slope that'll get flatter with time and that it's not a hard structure. Wave deflection and, and, wave, let's see, deflection and reflection are not an issue. There are breakaway walls that are parallel with the east and west property lines and they're designed to be breakaway landscape walls. They're parallel with the attack of waves and in my opinion, really wouldn't have any effect on the wave action itself. So in conclusion, I guess in conclusion, I guess one, the last point I'd like to make is I pointed out that the house, the original house was built in the 1880s. And so this is not a natural piece of terrain that never blocked wave action or floods. When you have a structure, it basically creates a, what they call a conveyance shadow. So if there's something that's in the way of a wave, there's a shadow behind it, it sort of blocks wave action. And a house that existed since 1880 is very similar to what the fill is today. So it's not like there wasn't anything there blocking wave action ever. So the proposed project is not dissimilar in that way. So again, the code's pretty clear that it's permitted so long as you have a building permit. We've demonstrated that and even going through the assessment, which I've done, in my opinion, it's still compatible with the FEMA guidelines and regulations. Any questions?
Then I have an affidavit from the project engineer, Stephen Lamansky. And one of the things that was, became apparent to us when we looked at the applicant's engineer's criticisms of the plans were a misreading of the plans themselves. A misunderstanding.
And also of the last gentleman's letter.
Oh, Mr. Bennett, sure. Sorry. I apologize, Anthony. I'm sorry. I'm usually pretty good at doing that, sorry. But I, Mr. Lamansky is here this evening, but I just want to highlight paragraph six of his affidavit. Pronto and Abrams, those are the, two of the representatives of the, of the appellate, demonstrate only a misunderstanding and lack of knowledge of the subject promises, private project and the applicable engineering that the site requires. The facts that the walls are breakaway walls eliminates the assertion of the Pronto at paragraph seven, eleven, fifteen and sixteen of her affidavit where she fails to understand the plans and claims that they're solid walls, they're actually breakaway walls. So that's just one primary aspect of the, of the mischaracterization of this project that the appellants have, I don't know whether it's mischaracterization or an attempt to confuse. Steve, did you have anything that you wanted to add? I know you didn't get an opportunity to look at Mr. Guardino's.
I'll take a look at it next month.
Okay, that's, okay. Oh, he's, he's referring to Mr. Guardino's fourteen-page single-spaced letter that I received yesterday around six o'clock.
Chairman.
Oh.
I just have a couple of comments, but I, I just want to point out the plans, and I'm going to let Ms. Pronto address, the apparent confusion or misreading of the plans, I just want to point out, is based on the fact and it's not a confusion. The plans that were provided to us through the FOIL process from the Building Department files did not indicate that the walls that we're talking about are breakaway walls. Subsequent to that, the last hearing and also subsequent to the issuance of the building permit, there were a whole new set of plans that were submitted that suddenly showed the plant, the walls as being breakaway walls. I'm going to let Ms. Pronto explain to you because they're still not breakaway walls. They happen to be now called breakaway walls, but they're not breakaway walls. But there are two different plans here and that's, you know, we're talking about maybe having some confusion. I think the confusion is that this is a moving target and I think it's particularly telling and I asked the board to consider the fact that the plans that are being relied on now to demonstrate FEMA compliance were not before the building inspector on September 26th when he issued that permit. And I, and I, you need to really think hard about that because it's three days later, suddenly a FEMA, allegedly FEMA-compliant plan shows up. But he clearly, the building inspector, didn't have it when he issued the building permit because the dates are, the date of the plans are three days later.
What was the date of the building permit?
September 26th.
This year?
Of this year. And these plans are all dated last revised on the 29th. And when you look at the plans and let, I'll let Ms. Pronto explain it, they are totally different. And I think that's an acknowledgement that the plans that the building inspector actually approved were not FEMA-compliant, but that's for you to decide. The other point I'm going to, I'd like to make just very briefly is that we talk about these lawsuits. Yes, there are a number of lawsuits that are pending. No court has made a determination on the merits of this case. So I ask the board not to be swayed by the fact that there were some preliminary matters that were brought to the court's attention. Yes, the court did deny a temporary restraining order, did deny a preliminary injunction, but no court has agreed with their position yet on the merits, that we haven't gotten that far yet. So no court has had a complete record and so just, you know, just don't be, don't be swayed by, you know, the information that's being provided because it sounds like a court has made a decision, they have not made a decision. So at this point, I think even before I call Ms. Pronto up, since we were going to get a writ of rebuttal, but you, you tell me what you'd like us to do. You know, in case there were any other people that want to speak, that, could we wrap up at the end and rebut whatever or would you rather hear now from our expert?
Usually we hear from the floor at the end.
Oh, at the end?
Yeah.
Okay, well then, however the board prefers it.
Could I just interrupt before you call your expert, you know, just with one, one comment, just to make sure that you and everybody else understands our jurisdiction and scope of review on this appeal, because I know you haven't appeared before us before. But on an appeal from a determination of the Building Department, the zoning board has what I call a de novo scope of review. So we can consider things that are being submitted by you, by the property owner, et cetera, whether or not they were before the planning, building inspector at the time that he issued the permit. We need to look at, for example, your contentions about FEMA regulations and FEMA requirements, the property owner's contentions about FEMA and thing, and we, we need to look at those issues ultimately and, and decide whether there is compliance with FEMA or if there needs to be something. done to make it comply with FEMA, et cetera, et cetera. But we do have de novo jurisdiction. I didn't want you to misunderstand that.
I know, I'm not quite sure that that's the case, in my opinion, but I'm going to argue with you because there is a record that had to be provided. But that's.
So you're aware of it.
It's your advice.
I'm trying not to mislead you.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay.
And I'm not saying whether that hurts you or helps you. I'm just trying to make it clear.
Understood.
That kind of issue has come up before with the zoning board in various cases. We have determined that we have de novo jurisdiction. The courts have upheld that we have de novo jurisdiction.
You don't.
I even remember one case where, at the zoning board level, the zoning board, in exercising its de novo jurisdiction, required that revised drainage plans that were submitted during the course of the zoning board hearing be utilized as a condition of its determination.
I just think that there's an interesting element to this whole process is that there's a moratorium in effect, as you all know, that would preclude the issuance of a building permit. This appeal is whether or not that building permit that was issued on the 26th was properly issued.
I don't want to.
I don't want to get into it. That's why it's a little different. So I think.
I just want you to know.
That's fine.
It's our position that we have de novo jurisdiction, historically, et cetera.
I just want to.
I don't want somebody to make a comment and then say that we didn't.
Later, John, later, please.
One sentence.
Later. Let the man finish his.
And there's one other thing I want to say, just so there's no misunderstanding. When both sides have completed their quote expert submissions, particularly in relation to FEMA issues, we will want our environmental planning consulting firm to look at everything and provide some type of report or guidance for the zoning board. We're not going to have our environmental planning consultant do it piecemeal. We pay them for that. Normally, an applicant reimburses the village for those costs, but in this case, you're not really an applicant, you're an appellate. So we are going to have our environmental and planning consulting firm look at everything when both sides have completed their submissions. I just want you to understand that too.
Thank you.
And also, I, and I'm sure the board appreciates, that both sides are submitting written affidavits, documents, letters, whatever, outlining the positions of the respective experts. Because the oral testimony, although it may be helpful for us to grasp things you're saying, when we get down the road and the record is closed and we're looking at everything and making a decision, we're going to be primarily looking at the documents because that's what we have in front of us. So I appreciate that from both sides.
Good evening. My name's Jaclyn Pronto, the president of Prime Engineering. I appeared before the board at last month's hearing. So I just want to start with the clarification in Mr. Lemansky's affidavit where it says that I misread the plans or misunderstood them. I just would like to be clear that his affidavit included some additional plans that I had not ever seen. I brought with me a copy of the plan that was included in his affidavit, and behind it is the plan that we had procured through the FOIL request of Village Files, which has the signature and approval of the building inspector. And I think it's obvious, without even looking very closely at these plans, you can see one detail here, which clearly does depict a solid concrete retaining walls with rebar, three walls in fact, with a common grade beam supported with piles. When you go to, and this plan, for the record, is dated May 16th, 2014, and it is stamped approved September 26th, 2014. This plan, which was included in Lemansky's affidavit, is dated September 29th, 2014. It's a later revision. And it now includes four details for retaining walls, and they're all very different than what was on the previous plan. So I took the last few days to review these in greater detail so I can provide some feedback in regard to my understanding of what these walls depict. I took the liberty of trying to highlight a couple of key points. The line that I've highlighted through the center of this is rebar. The call-out is number five at 24 inch on center. So what that's saying is there's a number five bar placed every 24 inches through the breakaway wall. Typically, there's no reinforcement in a breakaway wall. Goes on to call out 12-inch-long PTA dash four, two, 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 three-quarter inch stainless steel at 24 inch on center. What that is, is a connector that is at the top and the bottom of the breakaway wall, which is connecting it to the horizontal structural member, the grade beam. The way in which this wall is being designed is there's basically two horizontal members, and then every eight to 12 feet, there's a vertical structural member. In between those, call it like a window, is what's infilled with this block. Typically, the block is hollow, it's mortared together, and it's designed between 10 and 20 pounds per square foot so that when the wave hits it, it'll break. That's breakaway wall. That's the way it's designed. If you look at the detail, you can see soil that's located between these two. I highlighted this in yellow because it's very faint on the drawing and it's in a light gray. What this is representing is the breakaway wall associated with the building foundation, which is five feet inside of these planting walls on the east and west sides of the property. It's showing grass above. The detail fails to tell you what's happening between these two walls, but it's obvious that there's soil here for the planting material and to be in between these two walls. That's my assumption because it's not clear on the drawing. If in fact that's the case, and in fact, the way that this wall is designed, it's retaining earth. It's a retaining wall. I understand it's being called a breakaway wall. Think they're trying to show that, but it's not functioning as a breakaway wall. A similar detail to this is shown on the architectural drawings and the structural drawings by Silman Associates. I don't have those mounted, but I can point out the detail. This is foundation typical detail one, Austin Patterson Distin Plan, and has Robert Silman Associate Structural Engineer's name and seal on it as well. There is a typical detail perimeter pile-supported grain bead, grade beam and slab detail. And this mimics that detail in that it's calling out for number five bar at 20 inch, 24 inch on center. It's also calling for the 12-inch-long PTA connector to the lower beam section. The other thing I just want to point out on this is as much as it's Mr. Lemansky's affidavit, it is a sign and seal drawing by Timothy Rumpf. So I'm not sure how that role, how Mr. Lemansky's design played a role in here. Typically, his name and signature would be associated with these details. I just, I also want to put up this exhibit. I think it helps to clarify what some of these concerns are. What I did was with red, I've highlighted these breakaway walls. I don't know if everyone can see that. So there's the one here under the pool, and there's one here under the front steps. What this dark bottom line is, is the natural grade line. And so we all agree that we can fill two feet from natural grade. So this dashed blue line is that two-foot line. Everything that's solid and shaded up to here is the proposed grade. So I took their grading plan and I put their grades along here to sort of complete the picture of this elevation and this profile. And basically what we're saying is that all of this fill from the dashed line up to grade should be removed. It should be open. This breakaway wall should not have soil up against it. I went so far as to think about the structural calculation, the lateral force of soil up against this wall. If there's soil up against this wall, there's pressure up against this wall. There's a lateral force of soil. It's not structural. The soil isn't what's supporting the foundation, but it's soil. It has weight. Soil is 100 to 120 pounds per square foot. That's the weight of soil. It's a fact. There's pressure that gets pushed against this wall. Just to put some numbers together, the FEMA code says a maximum of 20 pounds per square foot. If we are to think about that as an equivalent fluid pressure against that wall, it is equating to five pounds per cubic foot. Eight feet of soil up against a wall exerts a pressure of 30 pounds per cubic foot. That's six times the amount of pressure. So if Mr. Lemansky is correct in saying that he's designed these walls in accordance with FEMA, then these walls are going to fail as soon as the soil's put up against them. If the walls are designed for the detail, which I haven't verified if the detail can hold 30 pounds per cubic foot, as it's, it's not our role to do that, then the wall will support the soil, but the wall is now not a breakaway wall, it's a retaining wall. So I'm not trying to confuse the board. These drawings are confusing, and it's not clear if the intent is a breakaway wall or a retaining wall. And it looks to me, as I review this, that it's a retaining wall. The other item that I want to mention is the pool. As you can see in this exhibit, the pool, the top of the pool is equal to this FEMA plus two elevation of 18. It's very clear that the way the code reads in regards to pools is that your lowest structural member needs to be at FEMA. Could be contended that you don't need the two-foot of freeboard because it's not a habitable living space, so it may not fall under the building code section, which is where the freeboard comes in. But it has to be, your lowest structural member has to be at that flood plane of at least 16. Or, as an alternative, FEMA does allow you to put it in the ground, so the top of the pool is at natural grade, which would be down at like elevation seven. So that is an alternative, although you have to consider buoyancy and design your pool as such. So this exhibit just clearly shows where the pool should be raised to. So the pile should be extended and the pool should be elevated further. And again, the soil up against it shouldn't be there. I want to hit a few points that were also mentioned. I'll start with Mr. Bennett, the attorney, not Mr. Bennett, the engineer. There's, I guess there was a comment about how, you know, the Dean and the Hackett Homes were able to fill. And that's true, they were and they did. When their houses were constructed, they were in an AE9 zone. There are absolutely no restrictions from FEMA as to fill in an AE9 zone. And so I actually had put a chart together to sort of understand all these various elevations between the three properties. Another thing that I would like to note is that when both the Dean Homes and the Hackett Homes were constructed, the FEMA regulations, as well as the regulations within the jurisdiction, was to utilize NGVD 29 datum. Today, FEMA and most municipalities require everything to be an NAVD 88 datum. There's about a one-foot difference between those. NAVD 88 is a foot lower than NGVD 29. So you have to kind of keep that in mind, so everything's sort of off by about a foot when you're comparing the two drawings and you're just looking at those numbers. So what I did was I put a chart together and I did that conversion so that everything's in the same datum, and it's easy to kind of compare them. Do you want me to hand that out? So basically, the AE9 elevation in an NGVD 29 datum can be considered eight. And I took it to the very exact, it's actually like .91 foot difference. So you'll see it's an 8.08 elevation. So the average grades on all three homes, the existing site grades for all three homes were right around six. I have the Hackett Home and the Dean Home at around elevation six. I have 40 Meadow at around 6.5, 6.25. So everybody's right around that same elevation. The finished floor of the Hackett Home, as I converted it to 88 datum, is 16.5. The finished floor of the Dean Home is at 14.9. The Hackett Home did fill their site to elevations 12 and elevations 10, right around there. And the Dean Home raised their sites and utilized fill till around elevation 14. The 40 Meadow has provided fill to elevation 14 in the back, 16 in the front, and all the way up to 19 on either sides with the use of these retaining walls. The actual height of the structure from the finished floor to the roof line, the Hackett Home is 23, the Dean Home is 27.75, and the 40 Meadow Home is 35. So now, when you actually compute what the height is based on the definition of the Village Code, which is your natural grade plus two foot, let's give everybody that two foot. So we're taking that elevation of six, and we're adding two foot, so now we're at eight. So we're taking the measurement of eight, and we're going to the height of that structure. The Hackett Home puts the grade, the height elevation as 31.58 feet above elevation eight. The Dean is 34.72 feet above the average grade, and 40 Meadow is 44.75 feet above the average grade. So they're close to about 10 feet above average grade. So any concessions that, you know, so there were, I should just say, there were no concessions given to Dean and Hackett in terms of being higher than the 35-foot height. So that is to help explain the fill under existing and proposed conditions.
Could I object as to how we use a different datum at the time? It's intellectually dishonest.
It's not. It's the way, and the datums are, the datums were dictated by FEMA in terms of what they used. FEMA decided to change it, and every municipality is starting to do that as well. New York City, which forever has used borough datums, Queensborough Datum, Brooklyn Borough Datum, is just recently, within this last year, said, no, every application is under NAVD 88 datum. So they're trying to get everybody into that same plane. I won't go on about that any further.
Jackie, is there anything else that's really specific that you need to decide?
Okay. I'd also like to just hand in for the board a few copies of, I just copied the first page of Technical Bulletin Number Nine, and there's just a very good picture in here of what a breakaway wall should be. It clearly says there's no reinforcement, there's mortar between them, and it shows, you know, the way in which the wall is supposed to break. So I just thought that would be useful for the board. So I'll turn that in as well.
It's your point though there, Jackie, that what's being proposed is not that.
Correct. What I see on the drawings is not reflected, does not seem to match the breakaway wall design criteria that FEMA is requesting, or is requiring, I should say. And if it's.
You can just hand it up.
Might as well hand it up if it's helpful to the board. I took the liberty of printing out a cut sheet of the partitioned, partitioned top anchors, top and bottom anchors that are being proposed. And you'll note in here that the standard length is eight inches, and the plans call for 12 inches, which is a stronger structural connection. They're also calling for them to be 24 inch on center, so basically every 12 inches, you have one of these. So it creates a very strong connection between the breakaway wall and the structural wall. I would also like to comment about the retaining wall. The Dean Home certainly does have a retaining wall. The retaining wall is located closer to their property line, probably a good 25 to 30 feet from their home. So very different condition than what you see in the neighboring property, and obviously probably due to the width of the property and the available space to construct. Two other points I want to make in regard to Drew Bennett's discussion before the board. He commented that in the, behind the building on the other side of the dune is sand, is a hillside of soft material, is sand. We read in the affidavit from Mr. Bennett that all fill is sand, which again, there's a lot of call-out about fill, about suitable backfill. Suitable backfill is not sand. So, you know, drawings sort of contradict a little bit of what that is being said. That hillside is being planted. It's being planted so it doesn't erode. That's the purpose of planting the hillside. In any case, should it erode and wash away. In any case, should it erode and wash away, there's a pool there. That's a structural obstruction, you know, that's an obstruction, so there's a pool there, it's not just sand. It is shown at a slope of one-on-three, which is 33 percent, and the FEMA regulations, which you've all received a copy at last month's board hearing, indicates that in order not have wave action, they recommend 5 percent, not 33 percent. So that's quite a significant steeper slope. That's it. Okay. Thank you for your time.
John, why don't you say... If anyone out in the public would like to be heard of this application, please come up and if you spoke last month, please don't repeat anything you said last month, repeat anything that we've already heard.
I did not hear last month, so I'm silent.
Good.
Yes, my name is Bruce Bachmann, I live at 660 Alsey Neck Lane, resident here of the village. I'm also a director of the Southampton Association, and in the course of our work at the Southampton Association surrounding the moratorium, we decided we really ought to understand as completely as we can, from independent sources, all of these issues associated with FEMA and height and the village regulations. We made a search as to who might be a good advisor to us, and we found Leonard Jackson Associates in Pomona, New York. And Leonard Jackson Associates are important because they are the engineering consultants to FEMA who prepared the Nassau and Suffolk County study upon which all the regulations we've been talking about tonight was based. I'd like to read, I'd like to actually firsthand out each one of the excerpts of our paper, it's important. The Leonard Jackson Associates report, covering letter, because you'll go back and get a couple more.
Bruce, do you have a copy?
Yes, I do, John.
Thank you very much.
Of course. There we go. Thank you. Thanks, you go. Thank you.
You have one more?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, I have one for the file, but I'll give one for myself.
Oh, I do, I've got it.
Thank you.
I've got one more for you, yes. I'm not going to go through all of this because it covers the, most of the subjects that we have been discussing, but I think it is important to at least summarize the conclusions that Jackson, Leonard Jackson Associates has come to. They did do the work based upon information from all the files, they also had access to the Lemansky affidavit, so they've read that, and this report comes from their review of the entire situation. And their review concludes that the project at 40 Meadow Lane violates the regulations which were set forth in the, with regard to FEMA, the New York State DEC, and village regulations, with regard to FEMA VE Zone. They list the regulations pertaining to the project, then they talk about how the proposed building has attempted to be designed to comply with the FEMA regulations, but they concluded on the second page that the building design, however, in conjunction with the proposed site plan, is a non-conforming design that violates FEMA regulations. The project violations include the following, it summarizes the discussed below, the other subjects we've been talking about, we're talking about breakaway walls, we're talking about backfill, we're talking about the swimming pool, we're talking about the fills at the south side of the building, we're talking about the deck, the wave ramps, and the planters and retaining walls, all of the things which have been discussed. But in the opinion of the group that basically were involved in preparing the FEMA study for Nassau and Suffolk Counties, this project violates the regulations. We'd like to submit this as an independent source and ask to be considered in your final deliberations.
Thank you.
Mr. Bachmann, can I have a copy of that report?
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to be heard?
Good evening, thank you for spending so much time on this, it's important. My name is Philip Howard, I live at 63 Meadow Lane, which is across the street, on just one property partially removed from the project site. I've been involved in this dispute through the summer until they were able to hire a better lawyer. I was functioning on behalf of all the neighbors. And I would just like to speak briefly to a few points. This house is nine feet taller than the surrounding houses, and nine to 20 feet taller than any house, any building in the neighborhood. It would, as the Southampton Press mentioned, stick out like a sore thumb. To get there, they've cut corners at every stage. You will see it, I think, in the FEMA report, you see it in their definition of a half-story, the front of it meets the half definition of a half-story, but the sides of the houses don't meet the definition of the house story because the walls go up, as you pointed out at the last hearing, more than two and a half feet above the floor. So it doesn't look like the typical half-story house, which is a roof on two sides and then a wall on either two sides. Throughout it is cut corners. Nonetheless, the strategy has been to attack the people who are opposing it and the neighbors as being the height of hypocrisy and such. So just to be clear, the Hackett house, which is 44 feet high, above sea level, I understood that the natural grade is eight feet, is actually one foot below the 35-foot height limit measured, average natural grade, if it's intended at eight feet, plus two feet. The Dean house is 43 to 11, it has a lower natural grade, and so by the calculations that I've seen, is a grand total of 11 inches above, by virtue of this longstanding practice, 11 inches above average natural grade plus two feet plus 35 feet. So it violates, if you will, by 11 inches, this longstanding practice. So if you look around the village of Southampton and all the houses that have been built under the prior FEMA designations, you will be hard-pressed to find any that materially differ from the 35-foot height limit measured against average natural grade, because the old FEMA guidelines approximated natural grade plus two where the houses were built. It's only with the new FEMA guidelines, which is, this was one of the first houses to be built under, all of a sudden, the houses go way up. I'd point out that the, as the engineers just did for the applicants, the fill that's in the, there is fill in the Hackett and the Dean houses, but that fill, on top of the fill, they have 23-foot and 27-foot houses, not 35-foot houses. They have one and a half-story houses, not two and a half-story houses, and that's why they comply. So when they call it the height of hypocrisy, with all due respect, I don't think there's any hypocrisy here. There's one house that would stick way above, in the middle of the historic district, above every other house, and that's this proposed house. They only get there with all the different things that we're arguing about. There's one other point, which is that at the demolition hearing for the house that was torn down, which was an 1880 or 1890 house, which we thought was tragic, we built, we bought an 1880 house, spent more money than it would have cost to completely rebuild it on the inside and preserve it on the outside, precisely because it was in the historic district. It cost more for us to do it that way, we think that could have been done, but at that hearing, the applicant promised he would build a traditional house, asserted this will definitely not be a contemporary house. At the hearing last year before this board, the applicant presented variants, never showed either the ARB at the original ARB hearing, subsequent ARB hearing, or at this board, what the house would look like height-wise in relation to the other house. It was always as if it was all alone on a five-acre lot, not a tiny lot. This is the drawing that was presented to this board, and this board asked us about the design of the house. And it was presented as the design. Now, Mr. Bennett has said in subsequent hearings, and phrases, "This was just a placeholder, it didn't mean anything," but that was what was presented when this board approved the house. In looking at the final approved plans, that was February 26th.
You're talking about our board or are you talking about the ARB?
Your board. Your board on February 26th had a hearing in which this was presented as the proposed house from which a variety of variants were sought and some were granted. This was what was presented. It bears no resemblance to, this is, I don't have a large one, but this is the house as originally approved, it's been modified slightly by ARB. It doesn't bear any resemblance to the one I just looked at. But in looking at the plans as finally approved, and maybe there's an explanation for this, I'm not sure, this is, and I have copies of this, this happens to be the roof plan for the proposed house by Robert Silman Associates. The date of this is two, the ARB sets as 5/2014, but the date of the roof framing plan is February 19th, 2014. And I just don't understand how this is the proposed, this is the roof for the modern house. I just don't understand how the roof for the modern house could be dated, its original, dated 2/19, when the plan presented to this board, again, maybe there's an explanation, seems to not bear any resemblance to that roof plan. So there's been a lot of talk about suggesting bad faith on the part of the neighbors and such. I don't think there's bad faith, this is a really important site of the town, the village of Southampton. It's visible for almost half a mile in many directions. It's really important to get this right. It's important that it comply with the zoning, everybody else complies with the zoning. It's important that it not be, it's important that we get it right with the new FEMA, that it comply with the FEMA guidelines, not jeopardize the village's standing under FEMA, which means nobody can get a mortgage. It's a very, there are a lot of very important issues here, and it's a matter of public importance. It's not personal, it can get personal, but it's just an incredibly important decision to get right for the village of Southampton. I appreciate all the time you spend on it, but a lot of us care a lot about this. You succeeded in energizing an entire civic community that wasn't energized before over these important issues, and again, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
My name is John Rose, I'm an architect here in Southampton. I've been practicing for about 30 years. What we're talking about here tonight is very important, quite frankly, in my practice as well. We've done a lot of FEMA-compliant homes on the water, and it has always been that one goes two feet above the freeboard and then you go up your 35 feet. It's been that way even perhaps before John Foster was here. Perhaps I could speak briefly about the half-story. The code says it's two opposing walls that have to meet a sloping roof, a wall not more than two feet. It doesn't say all the walls. It'd be very common, we've done a lot of homes in the village where we have rather large-sized dormers in this half-story. It makes for lovely space, and of course, it has to be a certain percentage of the space below, but it doesn't say that all walls have to be sloping down to that wall. You could have a gable wall that reaches up to the 35-foot limit. Just want to add a little clarity. Thank you for your time and happy holidays.
After what we're going to do is we're going to hold this open, obviously, right? If nobody else wants to speak, right?
Chairman, for all purposes.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment? It is important at some point that this be closed, and I know that we're both sides, and I'm guilty of it too, so I'm just being very candid, that we're both submitting written material. Can we put a deadline on the submission of written material so there's some finality there, otherwise we'll just keep going and...
We would only do that if we were going to close it, the decision. I think we need another month.
As I previously said, when all of the expert, and I'm really talking here about FEMA issues, I'm not talking about the height interpretation that's been there for 30 years, I'm not talking about the interpretation of the definition of half-story, those are not issues that I think either one of you are likely to present anything more on, but that's up to you. But the FEMA issues are issues that are brand-new in terms of your having raised them. They weren't even raised in your notice of appeal here. So we were hearing about the FEMA issues for the first time at the initial public hearing last month. We don't take our job lightly. You are saying there are important FEMA issues to be addressed here. We are going to take a hard look at them. We are not going to close this record until both sides have completed their expert submissions on the FEMA issues. And even then, we're going to have to hear from you guys. I mean, we can, as I said, once we have all of your submissions, we're going to have our environmental planning consulting firm take a look at all that and do an analysis for us.
That's fine, but my concern is that...
Whether or not you guys want to, at some point, close the record, subject to our receiving the report from our consulting firm, or whether you're going to want an opportunity to respond to whatever that report says is something you need to think about. We are taking our job seriously, and we're not going to close the record until your expert submissions are finished. You can communicate with each other, et cetera, et cetera. If things keep happening where something gets submitted at the last minute by either side.
That's my concern.
But you submitted something tonight at the last minute as well.
Wow.
I'm not criticizing either side. You guys need to work together in terms of timing to complete the record. We're not going to close it until we're satisfied that it's ready to be closed.
I've heard you loud and clear.
Otherwise, you're asking us to treat lightly the issues that you're saying are important.
Yeah, but there's a way of, if there's continued submissions at the 11th hour, then the concern is that the record never closes.
Well, I think we'd like to see that stop. I mean, we have a whole month now, we get those things in earlier than the day before the 22nd.
Understood, understood.
Because that doesn't give us any time to look at it.
That's my point, that's my point. Last time I was here, I got handed something at the hearing. So I mean, I tried to, listen, you know, I gave the courtesy, I could have handed it to him today, but I didn't do that. I, you know, I faxed it to him or emailed it to him the day before.
We don't want to hear about the bickering back and forth.
I agree, you too.
We've heard enough about that.
Bickering.
All right, let's have our motion to adjourn, Mr. Bachmann, for all purposes.
Thank you.
I move that we adjourn for all purposes.
Second?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
On the application of case number 2849, Kenneth and Beth Schwartz, 155 Dun Lane.
Good evening, for the applicant, John Bennett, I have the affidavit posted, mailing. And with me this evening are the, one of the two applicants, Kenneth Schwartz, and Vincent Franze, who's the project architect, as well as Charles Martyr, who has prepared the proposed landscaping plan. What we have here is a situation, a subdivision that was created well before the, any village wetlands laws. And therefore, what you have is a situation where the, essentially the turf, it doesn't go all the way down to Wickapog Pond, but it gets pretty close. And again, this subdivision predates the 1989, I believe, adoption of the village wetlands law, and I believe also the DEC regulations. I'm not sure of that, but I don't know that that necessarily matters for our purposes. The property has a certificate of occupancy for all the existing structures, which include a swimming pool with a patio. I'll just hand a few copies of those up, I think, just for the record. I don't think that anyone, everyone needs a copy, we do have a CO that includes the pool, so I don't want there to be any questions, but if the pool and the patio are legal. The pool does not meet the existing village structural setback. The, the pool does not meet the existing village structural setback. So one of the things we've proposed to do here is construct a new pool with some significant additional landscaping on the property. And the existing pool is approximately 104 feet from the wetlands boundary. We've proposed a pool that will be located farther from the wetlands boundary at approximately 114 feet, thus increasing setbacks from the wetlands boundary by approximately 10 feet. But I think as important as the proposed increased or enhanced wetland setbacks, we're proposing a extensive revegetation plan along Wickapog Pond, and Mr. Martyr, I'm going to ask him to describe, describe that. So again, net-net, it's a substantial increase, I think probably in, in the protection of the environment, probably the, the most important thing that you can do down towards the pond in exchange, as, as a condition, in exchange for redevelopment of the, of the accessory structure, is to create that buffer, because as Chick, I know he's not here this evening, but will tell you that the implementation of a planting plan probably does the most, has the most benefit in terms of lessening impact of Wickapog Pond. Charlie, can you explain how your office went about preparing this plan?
Yeah, Charles Martyr. Is it easier to look at this color? It's probably more fun to look at color. Basically, we developed a revegetation plan of appropriate freshwater wetlands plantings in, in a fairly initially dense planting, which will, will replace turf grass currently in its location and also bio, create a biofilter for any, any runoff, although the client will be doing organic lawn care in those, in those areas anyway. There's an existing path that we kept going down to the water and, again, created more biodiverse, appropriate pond frontage on the property.
So again, the, there really is very little, how would you describe the condition of the property as it relates to vegetation in front of the pond at the, at the current time?
Yeah, there's, there are very few invasives at the moment, so we're not recommending removing any of existing foliage. We'll be leaving plantings, we'll be leaving that, and just building, building and sort of puzzling into it when we actually do our layout. It's a very thin layer, basically, of shoreline protection.
And, and, Mr., can you talk to us about the, the vision for the property in terms of the redesign and the, and the thinking for the location of the pool?
Sure.
Just introduce yourself.
Right. Vincent Franz, Franz and Franz Architecture. From my perspective, the impetus for the desire to relocate the pool was desire for a poolhouse. Schwartz has asked me to design a poolhouse, and we did that. We designed a building that is in every way compliant with the zoning, the bulk regulations, coverage setbacks, the function of the building, et cetera, with one key exception, that being that the one place on the property where we could design and build a poolhouse that was in every other respect compliant is nowhere near the existing pool. The fact that the existing pool is set so deeply into the 100-foot wetland buffer made the, the only available location for a otherwise compliant poolhouse, not only impractical vis-à-vis the, its location to the pool, that would be a non-compliant zoning issue because a poolhouse in the village of Southampton can be no further than 25 feet from a pool.
So that, that requirement of the proximity of the poolhouse to the pool drove the location of the pool?
Of the pool.
As well as the poolhouse.
Right, yes. So that, that really summarizes how we got to that location for the pool. We weren't even going to consider looking for special relief to put a poolhouse in the middle of the wetland buffer. So, you know, our thinking was, okay, relocating the pool further away from the wetland seems like a good thing. Adding in the mitigating vegetation, revegetating that area seems like a, a benefit, and the new location of the pool further from the wetland also facilitates the, the compliance of the proposed poolhouse. With half of the property, almost, being within that 150-foot buffer, and with the existing development, the house, the garage, the hardscape, et cetera, the zoning setbacks, front yard, side yard, really kind of shoehorned us into this one spot for the poolhouse, and it begs a new location for the pool.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And of course, to keep us honest, to any sort of vegetative buffer, we would of course agree to put that in, in a covenant that would be run with the property. I, I know Chick isn't here this evening. He did tell me that he had some thoughts and he had given us a memo. I haven't had the opportunity to see it, so...
He did, we, we do have in our packets a memo from Chick with some comments. Have you seen it?
No, I haven't.
You can have that. Well, you don't need to look at it now. You're going to have to, uh...
We'll respond to it. Yeah, I mean, we'll try to, try to demean it.
Yeah, he couldn't be here tonight. He didn't want to, you know, he wanted to provide something.
Bless you.
Look at and respond to at the next meeting, or at the work session, you know, whatever.
Okay, very good. Actually, this is extremely helpful. Okay, perfect. Why don't we do that then?
The only question I have, John, is that getting rid of the whole pool anyway, so that you're moving the whole pool over to the side of the property, and you designed it like a, like a 37-foot long poolhouse and a 40-foot pool. I mean, it seems like there's about six or seven feet if you slid that everything back. Why can't that meet that? You know, why do you need that little corner to jut?
This corner here. Why don't we talk about that? Because I, I understand that. What was the thinking of, because we did have some conversation about that, Vincent, about sliding this back. What, what hap, well, for one reason, remember that under the village code, I remember now, under the village code, your accessory structures are required to meet the, both the principal and aggregate side yard, accessory structures are required to meet the minimum and total side yard for a principal structure when they're in the area of the principal structure. Does that, does that, does that create a problem if you slide it back there?
It, it creates a problem the minute the, the poolhouse or any structure would be proposed to be within the side yard between the house and this property line on the south. So anywhere in here, any structure proposed for that area would have to have a 50-foot, approximately 50-foot setback from the property line, so that...
So how close are you? It seems like there's still space between that end of the poolhouse and the front, and the, yeah, there.
Right there.
Yeah.
Can we bring it to there?
So you're suggesting...
So bring it to there.
Maybe a little bit of wiggle and...
Well, if we bring it to there, what Mr. Guzzi is suggesting is that you don't have this encroachment here, and the, the board obviously does try to attempt to maximize wetland setbacks, but at the same time being, you know, aware of the zoning issues. But if we, you still have some room where the plane of the, the line of the house right here, the, I guess that's the southerly edge of the house. You're right, once you, once this house comes into, within the southerly en, edge of this house, you have a problem with zoning compliance, but you still have, as Mr. Guzzi said, you still have some space here. Right, okay, so... Shift it, shift it to the, I guess that would be the nor, the north.
That's west, actually.
Oh, west, I'm sorry, okay.
Could also flip the orientation and gain...
And it's a big, it's a 37-foot, foot poolhouse, which is big, too.
Smaller than allowed, but it's...
Yeah, I was saying...
Or you added it the other way, you'd be providing an additional 17 feet to move that pool back.
I, I understand that mathematically, I can't disagree, but, you know, now I'm, I'm the architect, and so we have to think about, the things that we think about, like the harmony between the...
The aesthetics of the house on the pro, I understand that, but there might be enough room, even if you slid it back to where everything would comply.
The wetland line also slides closer to the house. We, we played around with it on a site plan, and, and again, because of the coastline moving up closer to the house, you don't gain as much space as if it was...
Let's see what happens when we slide it back to there.
There might be a little play there.
I think we should, I think we have to explore that. Okay, why don't we explore that?
Certainly explore that.
Okay.
That's my only comment.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, we'll take a look at Mr. Voorhees and try to conform to everything of that.
We do have a letter in opposition.
Oh, I didn't know that.
An attorney, Charles Arkuddy, who represents Susan, Suzanne Drag, I don't know whether she's a neighbor to the north or the south.
Okay.
And it's regard to the pool.
She's over here. She borders the property of the pool.
Is she on the south or the north?
She's on the south side.
She's on the south side?
Is, is the water here? She's over, she is, she is over here.
No, that's, no, can't be, that's the pond.
Where the water, she, she, yeah, she is right over here.
This would be south.
Yeah, she's right, she lives right over here.
So the pool is being moved closer to her house.
Her structure, she lives, she lives very, very close to the water, over here.
All right, but, but, don't, don't, we're just trying to locate where she's from. Okay.
All right, so the pool is being moved a little closer to her house. That's what she's objecting to, but it meets the setback.
Meets the setback. Meets the setback, yeah, okay.
Well, what can we say?
Meets the setback. All right, but we'll take, thank you for those suggestions.
He's requesting that we, this matter be adjourned.
Of course, it's going to be adjourned anyway. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone out here who would like to be heard of this application? No. Therefore, going to adjourn us for all purposes, is that the idea?
I move that we adjourn for all purposes. Second.
All right.
Evening for the applicant, Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. I have an affidavit, a post-it, and an affidavit, a mailing. Hopefully, this will be a fairly simple and straightforward application. It'll take the least amount of time possible. As indicated in the application, which by the way, I'm pinch-hitting for my partner on this, because she's covering something for me at the town, for which I'm very grateful. This is a request to enlarge an existing storage building located on the easterly side of the property and to construct it entirely over an existing deck, part of which is quite often during the season occupied by an awning. So even though we're requesting dune setback relief and front yard setback relief, we're not going any closer to either of those two items than the existing deck and the existing building are. I believe with the application, we submitted some information as to the 50% expansion. In fact, a number of years ago, I handled a case in which the baseline for that 50% was established, which was 54,318 square feet. In 2000, I got a variance to enlarge one of the existing buildings by 503 square feet, which increased the square footage by nine tenths of 1%. The 530 square feet we're looking for here would increase, increase the non-conformity, if you will, by 1%. So when you add the two together, you get a total increase in non-conformity of 1.9%, which is well under the 50% that's, that's allowed, that you're allowed to consider under the, under the regulations. I would argue that this is a minimal, extremely minimal application. It's on top of an existing deck, as I said. It's connecting to the south end of the, an existing storage building. We're not decreasing any of the setbacks. We're not increasing lot coverage by one square foot. This building being to the, fairly to the south of things is not opposite any other residential structure. And I have a nice picture that was taken about two years ago of the Meadow, the Bathing Corp. facilities. In the lower right-hand corner, it shows the structure in question, including the, the awning, which exists during the time when the club is in operation. This, this picture was taken in August of 2012 by a fairly well-known aerial photographer, and I'll submit that for the record.
Who's related to him?
That's somehow related to him, that's right. And the plans submitted also show that the addition is going to be no taller than the existing building. It's 11 feet 8 inches tall, and it's also behind a steel bulkhead, which would prevent any adverse effect on the, on the dunes and the beach and so forth. So I think that's about all I have to say, unless you have any material questions.
Yeah, it's a very nice picture.
Looks a little fuzzy, doesn't it?
I'll report back.
Put your glasses on, please, right on. Can we hear any questions?
No.
Rick, you ready?
Uh, I was just looking for something. I forgot what I was looking for. Ask the public while I'm...
Is there anyone out in the public who'd like to be heard of this application? They're all shaking their heads no.
By the way, I have the manager of the club here, if you have any questions for him. You can put him on the hot seat, too.
I have to listen to him too much, I don't want to...
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, give me one more second. Here it is. Oh, here's what I'm looking for, okay. Too many cases on the agenda for me to find what I'm looking for here. What you're looking for is a setback of 11 feet from the easterly line.
Yes.
And 31 feet from the, actually, from the steel bulkhead, it looks like.
That's pretty much as I understand it.
The application talks about from the average crest of the dune.
Yeah, if you look, if you look, it actually is the average line of the dune. See that, it's a, it's a zigzag. You can see on the map that is what we're...
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it goes like that. The bulkhead is the double line, and that's, that's the crest of the dunes.
Yeah, I was looking, all right, okay.
Yeah, see that? That's a continuation of this.
Okay, and it's south of the coastal erosion hazard line, but you're not asking for a coastal erosion hazard area variance, so...
No, because we're not, we're not changing the coverage.
So it's a non-major addition, I mean...
Correct.
We're not addressing that, you're...
No, no, you don't have to, because we're not increasing the coverage. It's already, it's already covered.
Okay. Want to do it?
Sure.
Applicant requests a setback variance to 11 feet from the easterly line and 31 feet from the average crest of dune, as shown on the site plan submitted with this application. Period. The proposed addition will be over an existing deck and thus will not increase lot coverage, and it will be located landward of an existing steel bulkhead. Period. Under these circumstances and in view of the history of this property and our prior decisions, we find that the requested setback variances are minimal, and we grant same.
I move that we pass this as stated by our attorney.
Second.
All right.
Okay, Candice, I have no notes on what I just dictated, so look at that one closely.
I will.
Yes, we did. Oh, you got it.
Did you want us to take it back?
I'm having too much fun. I'll go back up again. Thank you very much.
On the application, case number 2851, David Steinberg, 32 North Lee Street.
My name is CEO Leo. I'm the architect for David Steinberg. I have put in supporting material prior to the work session, and in it, there is a site plan and building plan and elevation, and I bubbled the area that we seek for variance. And also included the 3D drawings to show you that what we ask for is not intrusive to the character of the neighborhood.
You're going to have to speak up. I can't hear you. I don't know if the board can.
Not going to be able to pick you up on the microphone.
I also included the 3D drawings, and the last page is the aerial photograph that I used the Google map and the SketchUp and overlay our house onto the map. So you can see that what we're asking for is not detrimental to the neighborhood. The surveys I included, one of them is the existing condition, one of them is the proposed. The existing condition shows that the house, existing house, is not conforming. The setback is 24.9 feet, and we're asking for additional setbacks. So we're asking, the house is a little bit tilted, so we're asking between 2 foot and 1 foot 9. So the final setback will be 23.1 versus 30 feet. That's required on this corner lot. And so even though that is 23.9, but the existing house was nonconforming to start with, and the existing house was 24.9 setback. And it's the portion of this bump out that we're utilizing as the... We're using, we're utilizing nonconforming portion of this bump out is one story, and our proposed plan in that section is also one story. The floor plan shows the reason that we are trying to ask for this variance because this portion is the place where they can have a mudroom. The existing bump out is just too narrow to make it work. A mere 2 foot to 1 foot 9 of increase of the width of the room would make this mudroom functional. And I also included the decision that was made for the neighboring house and with the, by the zoning board. The neighboring house is only 2.2 feet away from the property line.
The house is directly across the street.
It's directly across the street. This street has very little traffic. Only five houses have access to this, to, you know, uses the street. And, you know, being in the corner lot, it's very difficult design, and I had struggled with it for a long time, and this seems like a very small request, and it really helps us a lot.
Well, the only question I have is, the old house that's there is going to be torn down, so what you have is an empty lot.
Yes.
Why can't you build a house that conforms to the floor area?
Because...
There must be some change you could make to get rid of that 100 square feet.
Well, you said you have, what, the 35-foot front yard setback?
No, it's a 30-feet front yard setback.
Okay, so, and the other house was already noncompliant by, so I can see what you're asking for, but I think I'd like to see a survey showing a building envelope.
There is a survey here.
Yeah, does it show the compliant, what the...
Or do you have a compliant envelope?
Yeah.
On the site plan, it shows this one, the site plan, not the survey. The survey or the drawing I did, it's on the site plan. I put it in where the principal setback is at.
That one, okay.
Oh, there's, I see. Does it show 40 feet here? No, 43. That swimming pool setback, 30 feet here.
40 is the swimming pool, yes. The house is 30 feet. We're actually not using the 30 feet. We're using, the whole house is actually 31 feet. Only the bump out area is slightly bigger because that's the ideal place to put the mudroom because that's the parking area. And being it's very difficult to design with the house and the pool and the garage, so we decided to go for a variance.
I mean, this is a pretty small lot, and it seems like you're trying to squeeze a whole lot onto it.
Yes.
Well, the gross floor area, too. She's, you know, for, you're over by...
36 square.
For, you know, for a whole new design.
We have, I don't know if we've ever granted a gross floor area variance. As the chairman and Mr. Gazza Woods were starting, were indicating, why can't you design a house which complies with the gross floor area?
I can accommodate that if...
I mean, that should be a simple thing to do.
Well, it just was...
When we, if we grant a variance, then we have to worry about setting a precedent and everybody in the world asking for gross floor area variance.
I can try to reduce the main house to accommodate that because it was mostly because of the roof lines and stuff to make it work, but I will definitely try my best to get that removed.
No, it's a small lot, and it's on the corner, so she's got some practical difficulties there, you know?
I wouldn't mind to take that out, but would be really helpful with the 2 foot a little bit closer to the street. Lot coverage is under.
Is it on here?
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah. It's on, the site plan is also on the survey.
Lot coverage is 14 percent plus 1,500 square feet, which is 3,099 square feet.
Do the plans have pyramid law information? Is it complying with that?
Yes, it's complying.
Applies to pyramid law?
Yeah, because I included the elevation. It's on the elevation. It's in the architectural plan, not on the survey.
First of all, that's a very nice layout, really.
You know, yeah.
With these dotted lines, the pyramid law lines? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
The triangle line.
I don't see it labeled.
I was being lazy, I guess.
Next time, you should label it, but, you know, you haven't asked for a pyramid law variance, so we don't need to worry about that.
No, no, no pyramid.
If you're going to revise to conform with gross floor area, you need to submit a revision that shows that.
I can do that. Would it be okay to close this? And I will submit those plans with reduced square footage before the next work session?
Well, we can't close it with a revision like that, but if you get it to us by the work session, it's possible we could have a decision.
Okay. So I will, I will, so you're...
Getting in by the 13th.
January 13th.
13th, yeah.
That a little bit towards the street, you're okay with it?
Yeah, it's a small lot, and it's on the corner.
Yeah, it's on the corner because we have 30 feet. Yeah, okay.
It's just the floor area.
But it's not the whole house. It's just sort of like the entry area.
I would squeeze that, I'll just take it out of it.
Anybody in the public who'd like to review this application? So we're just going to adjourn this for all purposes, huh?
Yeah, I move that we adjourn for all purposes.
Second.
All the favor?
So I need to present next time, too?
You should be here.
I should be here.
Because there's always a possibility that we don't have a decision, you know?
Okay.
Be here anyway.
Okay.
You know, they have said they're definitely granting the other variance, so...
Okay.
You know, but we take it one step at a time.
Okay. Thank you.
On the application of case 2852, Michael Yanu, 76 Pine Street.
Iowana?
Iowana.
Iowana?
I have it written phonetically.
Phonetically speaking.
You do, will we?
I don't know.
You're getting paid for this.
I know. And Kyle Roos, the designer, is with me as well, if you need any questions answered. This is a corner lot. It's the corner of Burnett Street and Pine, so we have two front yard setbacks. It's a sort of nondescript house there now.
It was a Wilkes house, I believe.
It was a Wilkes house at one time, yeah. So I think just at the very beginning, you see, what we're trying to do is I think it's, you know, with all respect to the Wilkes family, great Wilkes family, I think the design will be a nice addition to the area and in keeping with those small houses that are around Pine and Walnut and Burnett, but we need a little help from you here. The house has a CO for everything. I think that's in the record. If not, I can supply it. So we want to demolish the existing single-family residence and place the new residence that's shown on the second page of the design plan. Currently, the house, let me take them, there's four variances requested, but I hope you agree they're all fairly minor. On the Pine Street side, the existing house has a front entryway. It's just a covered entryway that is at, that's at, hold on a second, I have it, it's at...
244.
244. And we're proposing to have a covered porch that's at 245. So it's a tiny bit of a reduction in the setback, but we wanted to elongate that front entryway. So instead of 30, we're proposing at 245. And then along Burnett Street, the whole idea is to place the house at the setback of, it's 24... Hold on a minute, I have this information. Seems to be zoning out on it. Oh, the Burnett, the Burnett Road is 25 feet. The proposed residence, 25 feet. Now, what I wanted to bring to your attention about both of these proposed setbacks, although they don't meet the 30-foot setback requirement, because, bless you, Rick, because the house is in an R-1215 district. If you were to compute the setback, front yard setback, just on the scale based upon the size of the house, so that's 11611.1, because the size of the parcel, because the parcel is less than 12,500 square feet, the setback would be 25 feet. And I think everyone will remember from the legislative history of these two sections, at the last minute, the trustees inserted a 11611.1B, which increased the front yard setbacks based upon the zones. So if this were based upon the first part of...
I'm not sure why you're saying at the last minute.
Well, I think it's pretty clear what happened with that history because of, for example...
Particularly since I prepared that.
No, but, yeah, no, but I know you did, and this is a discussion that we've had before. That's fair enough. It was, the thought was, I think the thought was to give this board control over...
Yes.
You know, if you had the ability to meet it in those, based upon the zone, meet it, but there was a feeling that it wouldn't be a terrible type of relief to grant. So in other words, if, but for the fact that this is in a 12.5 zone, if this is an R-7.5 zone, it would be a 25-foot setback, not a 30-foot setback. And we're, it's essentially, we're trying to, we're not really increasing the degree of nonconformity as it relates to the setbacks in terms of feet. Got a corner lot, got some problems here, so obviously, sort of, in the old days, they would call it a tailor-made practical difficulty because we have to comply with two front yard setbacks. But again, I don't think from a streetscape point of view, in terms of the change that the house would create to the existing setbacks, not much of a problem there. So again, if this was a, if this house was based solely upon the lot size, we would conform with both front yard setbacks along Pine Street and Burnett Street. So we're trying to take advantage of the pre-existing nonconforming setbacks, although meeting what would be the setback but for that second portion of 11611.1. Then because the applicant has some small kids, just the hope would be that the board would, could give us some relief to create that small, it's a rather small hot tub slash plunge pool. It's 96 by 10. Couple things about that. Similarly, if this was, lot was, if the lot wasn't in the R-12.5 zone, we'd have a 35-foot accessory front yard setback, which we are almost at, but we have a 40-foot front yard setback because the house is in, because the lot is in the R-12.5 zone. I think the most important things to note in terms of the location of this very small plunge pool or hot tub are the following. One, we're behind the actual house, so it's not, it's not in the, in the actual functional front yard of the property. And two, we meet the 20-foot setback, which is the noise reduction setback, as it relates to all the different, the adjoining parcels. I can understand why the board hesitates to grant relief there because the whole purpose for the 20-foot setback from adjacent properties is to minimize noise, but again, we meet the setback as it relates to the adjacent properties. The house is behind, significantly behind the front, functional front yard of the house, and it's a rather small, you know, pool. I don't think there's going to be wild parties and entertaining around a 9.6 by 10-foot pool. And then finally, because the house is a five-bedroom house, we require four parking spaces. We're able to accomplish two of those in the existing garage. One of the parking spaces is clipped off. We need a 23-square-foot variance there to accomplish the ability to have the fourth space. It meets the front yard minimum of 10 feet, which of course, pursuant to Mr. Foster's powers under the, known to the zoning code, he'll require us to screen in an appropriate manner, but we need some 23-square-foot of relief for that easterly parking space. So there are four variances requested, but I think they're all, A, they're minimal, B, at least as it relates to the Pine Street and Burnett Street front yard variance request for the house, we're not increasing the lack of conformity as it relates to the linear setback. The hot tub is more than 20 feet from the surrounding properties, and it's behind the house.
Well, to the north, it's not. It's only 14.7.
No, that's what I thought, too, when I first looked at, that's the setback to the house. See?
It doesn't indicate, it doesn't look that way. Well, how far is that distance? What is that distance from the North Lee property line?
Have a scale.
Not shown, then.
It's not shown. Let's see. We have a scale, I don't have, I don't even have a scale, let me see.
Yeah, I see the double hours there. The double hours...
We'd have to show that for you, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me make sure we get that.
Well, maybe 20, but...
Maybe 20, but you wouldn't be able to tell. The setback, you're right, exactly.
Shows 20 feet.
What is this? Oh, I see, there might be, yeah, but it's not shown on the survey. It's shown on the site plan but not shown on the survey, so we'll get it for you on the survey.
Okay. Okay.
Again, the, the four variances, but they're all fairly minimal. Um, I don't know if I had anything else to add, um... They're just, you know, they're not, they're not substantial, I, I don't...
Is that an open porch?
Uh, in the front?
Yeah.
Yeah, am I correct? Proposed porch is an open porch.
But it's roofed.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's roofed, it's not habitable, yeah, yeah, it's roofed, yes, yes, absolutely. Didn't mean to be deceptive of that. It's an existing, there's an existing roofed entryway which, which is at that non-conforming setback, anyway, we're gonna ask you to, if we can expand along that, I know that seems to be something that you granted in the past, uh, the house at, uh, two lots down from my house, actually, on Hillbilly Street, you gave me a variance, uh, Mr. Davis a variance for that. Uh, because it was within the existing, it's an expansion, it's an expansion of the pre-existing non-conformity, no doubt about that, but it doesn't, doesn't push closer to the...
It's open, it's not heated.
It's open, it's not heated, and doesn't push closer to the road. Uh, I, yeah, you're right, it's roofed, I didn't mean to suggest that it wasn't. And the pool is pretty minimal, we'll make sure that it conforms to that twenty-foot setback and put that on the, uh, survey, I apologize, that should've, that should've been on the survey.
Do we have any other questions? Rick, you got anything else?
Yeah, more confusion than anything else.
Well, we don't want that to happen.
No.
Part of it may be due to the fact that, again, we have a survey that's showing the existing dwelling and the proposed dwelling.
Yes, on top of, yeah.
And, uh, it's really tough.
Okay.
But for example, your application asks for a front yard to twenty-four point five feet from Pine Street, but I hear, I see the, if I'm reading it right, the proposed roof porch, twenty-four point four feet from Pine Street.
We'll clear that up.
I'm not suggesting that you need to re-advertise for a point one inch.
No, but it should be correct on the survey, yeah.
But we need to know what, what variance you're looking for.
I agree.
Maybe, maybe we should have an existing condition survey and then a proposed one.
That's what we'll do.
Uh, but we need, that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, the survey's too busy, I agree.
In your application, you say, "The two-story portion of the proposed house will be located thirty point, thirty-two point five feet from..." Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, it's twenty-five.
That's that figure here. You say that the two-story portion of the proposed house will be thirty-two point five feet from Pine Street.
Yeah, w, w, you know, as, as distinct from the, the, the roof porch is what, I meant to be the bulk of the house was to, the habitable area of the house.
That's what I'm trying to clarify, if the roof porch is either twenty-four point four or twenty-four point five, to be clarified.
Okay.
And the actual two-story house, other than the roof porch, is thirty-two point five.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
I wanted to clarify that.
So the relief is just for the roof porch?
Okay, you might want to be a little clearer on that.
Okay. So it just, the, the habitable area of the house instead of the second, the two-story, okay, got it.
Now, uh, what else did I want to ask? In my packet, I have two sets of plans. One stamped received November twenty-four, twenty-fourteen, and one stamped received December twelve, twenty-fourteen. Are they the same, are they different, are there revisions, uh?
No, they're...
I don't, I don't want to have to wade through all these to figure out.
No, no, so you can, you can kill the first set of plans, there were some, the, the, the survey, I apologize, you pointed out, the survey and the first set of plans that were at variance, so I wanted to make sure that they were all the same.
That one, is out?
That's, no, the November twenty-four one's out.
The one that's stamped December twelve is the one we're looking at?
Yeah, I have the cover letter.
See, I don't have the cover letter, so I don't know what the difference is.
Sorry, you have the cover?
Take the other one back and I won't worry about it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get those things clarified. Is there anything else, Rick, or, sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, that's all I had at the moment.
Okay. Any questions from the board, or anything that can get you, or?
No, I'm just...
Okay.
Put the one number on the survey.
Yep, yep, we'll put that on there.
Very good.
All right, okay. Can I go home now?
I certainly hope so. Don't want to chase you away, but...
I was just cherishing, cherishing the moment when you told me to speak louder.
That's the first time I ever heard that.
I want you to know that I had trouble saying that. Straight face, real trouble. But it's late, we can laugh.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Hi, John.
Merry Christmas to you, John.
Particularly when I had to tell you afterwards to shout.
Excuse me, Mr. Running, you're not speaking loud enough.
Yeah, completely.
You looking for the file? Here it is, you looking for the next one?
Two eight five two.
This is the one?
Yeah, that's the last one, right?
Yeah.
I want to get some of John's stuff out of the way here. On the application of case number two eight five three, JV twenty Gin Lane, LLC twenty Gin Lane.
Saving the best for last. Edvich Peconic Environmental Associates, I'm here with Dan Thorpe from LaGuardia Landscape Design, as well as Kevin McGowan from Essex Heftren Angel. This is a pretty cut and dry application. It's a two-acre property that is, um, across the street, across Gin Lane, Lake Agwam. It's on the microphone. So you have a two-acre property, it's in that area that, um, the former Walden area, the new subdivision, uh, right now consists of lawn with privet, a couple specimen trees, and pretty much what the request is for is for some limited grading and landscaping that's going to be done within a hundred and twenty-five foot wetland setback, as well as one structure that's going to be located within a hundred and fifty foot structural setback, which is a driveway gate which is located, which are located about seventy-five feet from the wetlands associated with Lake Agwam, again, across Gin Lane. Of note is the fact that the house itself is in AE seventeen zone, the house and all the other, uh, structures are outside the purview of this wetland special permit. That being said, though, you have to be able to get up to the house, um, so what we had to do is put a limited amount of fill in the front in order to provide a parking court up and be able to get into the house. It is, uh, it should be noted that the original motor court was going to be at elevation fifteen, sixteen, uh, based on my experience, after we did, uh, four fifty Gin Lane in front of this board, we dropped the court by two feet, it's now at elevation thirteen, and we've now limited the, um, fill to be brought in to eight hundred and sixty cubic yards. All the new planting that's going to be done in the area is a hundred and twenty-five foot wetland setback, which, just so you know, is about only sixty feet of the front of the property, uh, per the landscape plan. It is all going to be native wetland species. In fact, what's interesting to know is that right now there are no existing, no existing wetlands vegetation, zero, and it's going to be fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-four square feet of new native wetlands vegetation, as you know, because the whole thing is existing lawn, non-native lawn, the area within that area too, uh, is going to be native fescue lawn area with the mix that has been approved by Mr. Voorhees in the past. And I think I'm just here, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Well, we do have some, uh, some notes here from Chick, who's not here as you know. He does have some questions and concerns that he will address, but we do have some notes here from him.
Was there a memo?
Yeah, came this afternoon by email.
Okay.
I only have the one copy.
I have an extra copy.
You have an extra copy, all right.
I noticed, I noticed this, uh... Yeah, there's an email that Chick sent today to, uh, Diane, myself, and Kevin. And then there was a follow-up email that, asking, asking Rick, asking Kevin or me to bring that to the meeting so we can give it to you.
Okay, well, why don't we go through it, um...
Well, why don't you, uh... What, you want to go through it now or?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just really quick, I mean, um, we've, we've been here for a long time, so we could spend a couple minutes, it'd be great. But we're really, existing landscape areas exist within a hundred and twenty-five foot setback, this may provide, uh, support for setback relief. Um, as we said, existing, right now there is no native vegetation, so what we're actually doing is improving the situation in this area. Uh, non-native landscaping is proposed within a hundred and twenty-five feet, uh, we should reduce the non-native species within a hundred and twenty-five feet. Do we have a non-native?
No.
I don't, I, I think Mr. Chick, uh, Mr. Voorhees may be incorrect on that, the only non-native I can think of is that little thing of privet that matches the existing private hedge.
Along the street.
Along the street, because right now there's an existing private hedge that's going to remain here, and I think it was, was it only these two areas that were being added just to frame the...
Right, he probably is referring to that because it's across the street from Lake Agwam.
Sorry?
Across the street from Lake Agwam.
Right.
So that's why he's referring to that.
So, but is it that, is that what he's talking about? I don't know what you think of, because I, I, everything else is new.
He suggests, since he couldn't be here tonight, that he would be...
He'd like to talk to you.
Pleased to talk to you.
Okay, I, I had spoken to him before the work session and he had told me, he, he must've been pretty busy, he's going to try to provide any comments beforehand.
Yes.
No structures are proposed...
He hasn't performed a detailed review yet.
Right.
So these are preliminary comments, uh, that he asked us to give you tonight.
Is it possible that we can...
And then you can follow up with him.
Okay, great, so, um, we'll try to follow up with him, and whatever you need back before the work session. Uh, the one I would like to address though, real quick, is, uh, he mentions about reducing the motor court, which I know we were able to do on four fifty Gin, we can't do this on this one because this is actually, uh, part of our required parking, we have a seven-bedroom house, and these are actually five of the parking spaces are right here, and then we have the other one over here, so that's, we're required to have six parking spaces, so...
What about the drainage for all that parking area, do you have a plan for that?
The drainage plan was filed, actually, as part of the, um, the grading plan.
So where is the drainage going from, from that area? How's it working? Usually it shows dry wells or, you know, impervious driveway, all that information is sort of written on the plan somewhere, I don't see, I don't see how it works.
Well, he has a drive, what we could do is, is provide more detail.
Right.
They don't know how it works.
Okay.
You know, where's the water going, you know?
Okay.
And how is it getting there?
Right.
And, and will it all be contained on the property?
And again, about the fill, you mentioned about the fill about the one twenty-five, we, we've already, um, we tried to get ahead of the game with this, uh, the original plan that I'd gotten from Mr. LaGuardia's office, had actually had retaining walls and had more fill here, we've reduced it as much as we can in order to get the appropriate slope to get up to the parking area. So really, for us to reduce it yet again, you're talking about, because the house has to be a certain elevation, we already have two sets of stairs here, you're talking about more stairs, because the house still has to be where it is, so you're increasing, we'd have to probably put some retaining walls, which may end up falling in the hundred and fifty foot setback, and so...
What's the parking area made of, is it, is it paved, is it cemented?
No, no, it's gravel.
It's all gravel, pervious?
It's gravel, I believe it's pervious, yes. I think it's called out on this, um, actually, it's not, it's called out on your plan now, but we can, we can detail it more, we can provide more of the detail.
Yeah, yeah, like, show us how it's pervious.
Mm-hmm. And test holes may be needed to address drainage, I believe we have three test holes we're done on the property, so I think we have enough test holes to do that. So I'll, I'll get ahold of Chick and we'll see what we can do to address these.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Rick, you have anything else?
Nope.
In public, we're in a public, so we're gonna adjourn this for all purposes.
I move that we adjourn this for all purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next year.